Are y'all ready? Good afternoon, Board members, staff, members in the audience. Let the record show that today is June the 3rd, and we will now call the Amherst County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Pugh will lead us in the pledge, and I'll lead us in the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for being able to participate in democracy in the greatest country in the world. We thank you for all the people that make this possible, all of our friends, family, and citizens in the armed forces, those in public safety, those that protect us every day, our schoolteachers that teach our children. Please give us strength to make hard decisions. Please give us wisdom to make smart decisions. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. We will now need an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is approved. We now move on to citizen comment. Let's see, we have Mr. Marx signed up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and staff. My name is John A. Marx, Union. I reside in District 5. I have two items I'd like to address. First, on January 21st, 2025, the Amherst County Board of Supervisors held a public hearing on a proposed draft agreement concerning Witten Country Club. The minutes states that I quote, "The board tabled this item for a future meeting as soon as possible, and all members of the president have sought outside counsel to review the current and proposed contract," end of quote. It's been four months since the public hearing, so under the Freedom of Information-- I'm not gonna do it over, okay? So, under the Freedom of Information Act, I am requesting a copy of the actions taken concerning the board's commitment identified in the minutes and the results of those actions concerning this matter. Second, I see from the agenda that the board is receiving an update from the service authority concerning the Gateway Project. I believe the update will indicate that the Service Authority Board has voted to proceed or will recommend proceeding with the construction of Gateway Project 3 at a cost of $351,834. I would like to gently remind this board that Amherst County taxpayers have already spent or committed to spending $462,453 in interest and engineering fees for Gateway, and that the Service Authority is simply an agent of the county to oversee the project and bears no physical responsibility should the project fail to materialize. The county taxpayers will bear the brunt should the project fail to materialize. Why do I make this statement? Because Resolution 2023-5R and the support agreement with the Service Authority adopted by this board assumes all physical responsibilities. I would also mention that currently there is no formal commitment in writing relative to this project from the developer, that the memorandum from the Service Authority Executive Director references instances where the developer had shown little progress towards moving forward with the project and is still not meeting target dates, providing information. The Service Authority recommends that no work be performed on Gateway Projects 1 and 2 until the developer has Board of Supervisors approved site plan and has committed to performing site work on the property. This same logic should be applied to Project 3. I am of the opinion that the taxpayers are being placed in an unnecessary situation, and simply put, I feel like this board is playing Monopoly with my money. I'd like my comments recorded, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we will now close citizen comments. Move on to the consent agenda. Board members, are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is now approved. We will now have a special presentation. It's a commemorative resolution. What did I do with it? Here we go. And it is our honor and privilege to present this to Ms-- I always get your king-- I can't remember her meeting name-- Linda Martin Felix. And for a job well done in Amherst County, come forward, please. Don't run away, because we're gonna get pictures.
Okay.
Let me stand near this so everybody on the YouTube can hear it. A commemorative resolution, number 2025-2-CR, a commemorative resolution honoring Linda Martin Felix upon her retirement from Amherst County. Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia, that the board recognizes and thanks Linda Martin Felix for her many years of service with the Amherst County Human Resources Department. Whereas Ms. Felix has served the Commonwealth of Virginia in public services for 36 years, whereas she began her public service career in 1989, serving as a retired senior volunteer program administrator, and whereas she earned a bachelor's degree in human resources management from JMU in 1992, and completed a dual master's in public administration and urban planning from the University of Virginia in 1998. And whereas Linda served in local government in Madison County, Orange County, Acuama County, and Amherst County. And whereas she also served as the executive director for services for abused families in Coal Pepper, Virginia, as a grant writer and senior planner at Piedmont Housing Alliance in Charlottesville, Virginia, as a program administrator with the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, and as a senior policy analyst and HR consultant for the Virginia Department of Social Services. And whereas she is nationally certified as a Senior Human Resources Professional by the Human Resource Certification Institute, a senior certified professional by the Society for Human Resource Managers, and a credentialed manager by the International City County Managers Association. Whereas she established her first human resource department in Amherst County and served faithfully for nearly nine years. And whereas Ms. Felix served on many boards, committees, and commissions throughout her career, including United Way Funding Panels in Coal Pepper and in Lynchburg, Madison County Fair Board, Eastern Shore Disability Services Board, and the Virginia Local Government Managers Association. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia, thanks Linda Martin Felix for her many years of services and wishes her well in her retirement. That this resolution shall be enforced and in effect upon adoption adopted this third day of June 2025. That's the formal part of this. What people don't know is what went on behind the scenes. This lady started our human resources department from the ground up. We didn't have one. And she-- it was a lot of growing pains. And some of her decisions were not always popular, but they were right. And she stood by them. She has been fair, she's been equitable, and she has been an asset to this county. And for that, we thank her. So, thank you. Congratulations. All right, Board members. I guess, should she just stand-- how does that work best, Jeremy, for us to stand right here? You want monkey family? Y'all come up here, please? Thanks again. Enjoy your retirement. Absolutely.
Thirty-some years ago, I appeared before the Orange County Board of Supervisors for the first time, and I opened my mouth and gobbledygook came out. And 36 years later, I still feel the same way. My voice still shakes, my knees still shake. I hate speaking in the public, but I am so grateful, and I needed to say that. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come here and work in Amherst. I have enjoyed the entire time. It has been so great to end my local government career in this beautiful county, and I thank you for that opportunity. You guys have also been very supportive of almost anything that I brought to you, and you have taken some very courageous actions to increase compensation for employees. And I have always thanked you for it, but I want to thank you for that again. The employees appreciate it, and I do too. This county is blessed with hard-working, ethical, and kind employees who choose to come to work every day, and they give their best to the residents of the county. I have enjoyed working with them. Finally, I'm so grateful for the support of my family that are here today. He hates it when I call him this, but my sweet husband Chuck-- he don't want to admit he's sweet-- and then my beautiful daughter Dana. And I'm particularly blessed here to have my 87-year-old daddy, Junior Martin. He has been my biggest cheerleader my whole life. And Dad, I'm who I am today because of how you raised me and molded me, and I appreciate that so much. Thank you again so much for this resolution and for letting me serve here and at the end of my career. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't feel bad at any given-- All right, Board members, we need a motion now to adopt this resolution. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. You're official.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ms. Felix.
I'm envious.
All right, old business. We've got the Gateway Project update. Our director will come up and present that to us.
Yes, I should thank Mr. Marx for making my presentation here. The way this was supposed to function was the Board of Directors for the Service Authority were meeting this afternoon prior to your meeting. However, we did not have a quorum. So, we will be meeting on the 11th Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM and go over these items here that I'm presenting to you. Well, project history. December 23, the project was reformatted to meet the goals and reduce the project budget from $7.7 million to $3.9 million. February 24, the Board of the Authority, we entered into an engineering contract with Hert and Profit for $183,000, of which $225,000 was the budget for that, so we were able to reduce the cost there. And further, we partnered with the developer for the necessary survey work for the project, and saved us over $16,000 in that effort. We determined that the best way to do the project was in three subprojects. Number one being the pumping station, number two being the force main across the Morecambe property, and number three being the fourth main along Route 210 right away. Then in August 2024, the Authority Board of Directors authorized the ARPA funding grant subrecipient agreement with the County Board of Supervisors, committing that grant funds received by Amherst County grant funds would be spent by the Authority to extend sewer service into existing developed areas that currently utilize individual onsite service systems-- or treatment systems, septic tanks, drain fields-- and for the purpose of extending public sewer into the service area of Amherst County known as the Gateway, which lack public sewer service to accommodate any development of some large property tracks. We staffed to determine that project number three could move forward while the developer was analyzing the results of their property survey work and how to best maximize their site due to the changes required from the original concept site plan. ACSA would wait for projects 1 and 2 until the revised site plan was finalized, so the pumping station location and force main routing would not be changing, possibly requiring additional engineering work to be performed and costing additional-- resulting in additional costs from that. At the December 2024 regular board meeting, project schedules for what ACSA was doing and the developer were presented. ACSA has been moving forward with our project schedule. However, the developer has run into issues meeting his proposed project schedule. We had the engineers move forward with the design, obtained VDOT required approvals, bidding documents for Project 3, the Route 210 Force Main. This project was advertised for bid on April 17, with the bids received May 27 at 2:00 PM. These bids were received and opened publicly on May 27, and two bids were received. Included in your package is the bid tabulation and a recommendation from the engineer for award. I was going to request of the Authority Board authorization to award and execute construction-- a construction contract to Tony Construction of Forest, Virginia, in the amount of $351,834 to perform the project Gateway Old Town Connector Force Main. This successful low bid was under the engineer's estimate, and that, in this day and time, is a miracle in itself. It's well within the budgeted funds, grant funds, and the project would be paid for with the ARPA grant funds as obligated in the ARPA subrecipient grant agreement. And then I was going to recommend to the Board of Directors for the Authority that we put a hold on any other work located on the Morecambe property, projects number 1 and projects number 2, until Mr. Morecambe, who is currently revising-- and actually, this afternoon, I received confirmation that they are still working on the revisions of their site plan, and they will be bringing that site plan back before the Board of Supervisors for approval. But until that done is completed, my recommendation to the Authority Board is that we do not move forward with projects number 1 or 2 at this time. And then further, we don't enter into any long-term financing until the site plan has been presented and approved by the Board of Supervisors. The project costs to date, including construction, contract award, can be funded with the ARPA grant funds already received. ACSA is committed to spend the designated 1 million ARPA funds by November of 2026. Including engineering costs spent, there will be a remaining of that $1 million-- over $550,000 available for projects 2 and 1. I was gonna then ask the Board to authorize myself to provide any assistance to the county grants administrator in submitting an SEID 2025 grant application. We assisted the county previously in going after these funds, and it's a half a million dollars of grant funds. The grant administrator and I met with the grant reviewers to determine how to strengthen our previous grant proposal, and we now feel confident that we know what the program is looking for and can meet those needs. Halting work on projects number 1 and number 2 will give time to see if the county would be awarded this funding, reducing the amount of long-term financing needed to complete the project. Then finally, I was gonna ask the Board to allow me to continue to determine ways to reduce project costs while still meeting the goals of the Gateway Project. To date, project expenses have been under project budget amounts, resulting in savings of over $58,000. If Project 2 costs are similar to Project 3, there'll be an additional $125,000 savings. In developing the project budget-- this was developed during a time when cost estimating was going-- engineering cost estimating was going all over the place. And this project was developed using the standard practice from VDOT of adding a contingency of $50,000. This resulted in a contingency of over $1 million to the project budget-- original project budget-- or, I'm sorry, the revised project budget. Should this contingency not be required, we would then significantly reduce the amount of long-term financing needed to complete the project. This shows-- it's also included in your package. It shows the actual three phases of the project. Oh, it did that again, didn't it? With project number 1 being the actual pumping station-- approximate location. Project number 2 goes from this blue line here to the blue line on 163. Project number 3, which we are working with, is from 163 to the existing sanitary gravity sewer that's owned by the Authority along State Route 210. This is a contracted job. The Authority does not have the manpower to deal with traffic control and dealing with a long-- a big job on State Route 210, as well as having the boring equipment, so we had to contract this out. So, I've just gone over those recommendations. Are there any questions?
I'm sure there are. Board members?
I'm sure. So, my understanding is you're suggesting that--
Project number 3. I'll go back.
Authorization to award and execute a construction project, blah, 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 Gateway Old Town Connector Force Main. So, from--
Intersection of 210 and 163.
163 back to the treatment or the--
The existing sewer collection system.
Sewer collection system. Is what your request is.
That's what I will be requesting of our Board, yes.
So, a couple of questions. So, if that's a force main--
Correct.
What use is going to be getting out of that in the--
Anyone along that sewer force main could connect to have public sewer service. They would need an individual grinder pump--
They would need a grinder pump.
Yep.
So, my point is, it's not a-- it's not a-- it's not a gravity system, it's a force main.
It is a force main to approximately this point right here, and from there on, it will be gravity.
So, but is my understanding that everything in phases 2 and 3 is gravity to the pump station?
No. I'm sorry. Within-- within these here-- this is the Morecambe property Phase 1A and 1B. The developer would be bringing his own gravity sewer system to the Authority's pump station.
Correct. And then you would pump it back up the hill?
Correct. And if you may recall, when we did the project reformation, the other properties further upriver would be daisy-chained into this pump station rather than going along the James River, where the construction was extremely expensive to do.
So, if anyone on this side-- the training facility-- training school side of 210-- I mean, 163-- wanted to connect into that force main, they'd have to use a grinder pump.
That is correct.
Because there's not gonna be any gravity line down to the pump station in the future or the--
The areas along this part, which is the Marymore, that will be able to gravity into the pump station with a future project.
Yeah, but nothing on this--
From-- pretty mu--
Nothing on--
163 to where-- the number 3 project terminates will-- all of these-- make sure I'm getting this right here. All of these properties here on both sides of 210, if they need public sewer service, it would be a grinder pump.
Okay. Has there been any public outreach to property owners in that area to garner their interest in connecting to this force main and buying a grinder pump?
We have not at this point looked into that. This project was originally to serve the Gateway area, and that's what it was designed for. And because of the topography, that's the way we've had to deal with it. Once we get this thing going, we can reach out to those individuals and see if they do desire service.
Any failing drain fields in this area that we know of?
None that I'm aware of. I know in the Marymore, the analysis of there, they're basically time bombed. Their average age is 45 years.
All right.
Yeah.
And please, I know I'm peppering you with questions, but--
No, that's what I'm here for.
Do it earlier.
You didn't do it earlier this afternoon.
So, typically, if a local government or another entity was gonna go in and put a project in, I would think we might want to determine the interest of connecting to it before we do the capital outlay, right? That would be normal. So, you said these were ARPA funds?
Correct.
Are we under-- I would imagine they probably should have been spent already.
No, these spends-- these funds have to be invoiced by November of 2026 and spent by December of 2026.
Or what happens?
Or that money gets returned to the federal government.
And how much of the-- how much was the ARPA funds?
It was $1 million for this portion of the project.
They were gonna spend about $350,000.
About $400,000, be over.
Well, you're proposing to spend $350,000?
I'm proposing to spend additional $350,000. We have spent roughly $70,000 in engineering fees to date.
All right, where is the other $600,000 going?
Well, if indeed the Morecambe project actually starts moving, we can put those funds through that project. It's originally anticipated.
If. If, if.
I understand that. That's why I said it the way I did.
What is your contingency for the use of those funds if that project does not move forward?
There are other areas of Amherst County that does need public sewer service.
Are there other areas that could use this $350,000?
Of course there are. There's a lot of areas within Amherst County that could utilize this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Castillo. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have lots of questions slash concerns. Some of them that are gonna be on the heels of what Mr. Martin is alluding to. So, for Phase 3, for that section, as you stated-- and I don't want you to think we're badgering you--
That's fine.
And I'm gonna get in the Board's comments in the Board Supervisor's section in a moment. This is kind of playing into my concern with the composition of the Service Authority, and I'll get to that in just a moment. of the service authority, and I'll get to that in just a moment. And I, I, I'm with Mr. Martin, I don't want to badger you, but at the same time, we get fragmented information from how this composition is laid out right now. So I'm sorry about that, but I, I, I need this for clarification and whatnot. So number, project three.
Yes, sir.
Nobody has reached out with any interest, which we, they probably don't know either. That'd be a pretty fair statement, correct?
That is correct. We've not, we've not, we've not gone forward with this.
All right, so-
And in, in one, one area, I had no idea where the, the, these bids would come in. If these bids were exorbitant, I was going to recommend just off total.
And I'll, I'll get to the bids in just a moment, because I, I've got a concern about that as well, but hypothetically speaking, if someone in this area that is designated by section three or project three wants to connect, what would be the fees to connect to that?
It would, it would depend upon the size of the service that they are requesting. If there's a commercial, we have a certain, basically, I think it's $4,500 for the system development fee. For gravity, it's $1,500. We would need to establish a fee for a grinder pump connection to, to cover the pump.
Right, so again, going back to-
In the, in the past, when, uh, because there are areas where this is, this has happened even recently, the homeowners will purchase their, their grinder pump using our specifications, and they are totally responsible for that operation and maintenance of it.
Understood. But if it was me, right, if I was a property owner in that section, and everything is hunky-dory right now, and I'm not having any problems, I'm probably not going to be compelled to spend money-
Correct.
-when everything's working fine, right? Is that a pretty safe assumption?
That's a very safe assumption.
So I don't want to, I don't want us to be writing checks that our butts can't really cash right now, for lack of better words, because I'm, I'm not putting a lot of faith that we're going to have a lot of people knocking at the door to connect on project three. So I hear what you're saying about Marymore, and I've done a little bit of homework about that, but really, project three, we've got to do that to really compel the rest of the project forward.
Correct.
That we have no, again, that we have no confirmations it's actually going to happen.
At this time, that's correct.
So.
And that's why I am making, was making the recommendation to my board that we utilize the grant funds that we agreed we would utilize to take care of the section three, and if it doesn't go any further, in the future, should that prop, the yellow and purple properties need or want to have their sewer service, we have at least brought it to that location. That property could be served. They would have to do their own pumping station, their own force main.
Right.
In the future, if that's what it's chosen to do.
So we borrowed 2.5, correct? Or did we borrow more than that?
No, that's, that's, that was the, the lo-
And the-
Short-term, short-term loan.
Right, which we have to restructure. When do we have to restructure that again?
March of 2026.
Okay. And the $1 million was just to be added to the 2.5? So where were we coming up with the, the difference of that $484,000 to complete the project if this thing moved forward?
That was, we were, at that time, when this was, this budget was revised, we were anticipating getting the half a million dollars from the SEID grant program.
And where do we stand with that now?
We are making, going, we've made pre-application for the 2025 series. We have a much firmer understanding of what that project, that program is looking for, so we will be submitting a very strong application to that. I believe they're looking at seven grants across the state. It's a regional program.
Understood.
They're looking to fund seven projects across the state for construction.
But no guarantee we'll get that $500,000?
No, sir.
So what's the contingency plan if the $500,000 grant is not obtained?
But one of the contingency plans was not to use that million dollars of-
ARPA?
No, of contingency funds within the budget.
Okay.
There's an extra little over a million dollars in the, in the project budget of 3.9. Because when this project was redesigned, the practice at that time was to add a 50% contingency of construction costs because the construction market was extremely volatile.
Okay.
Because it currently is extremely volatile.
Sure, but a little bit more to our favor?
Yes.
Right?
And the, and the bid, and the bid that we received is what, within the engineer's estimate, and I had done my own estimate, and it's well within that as well, so it, within the, the project funds, project grant funds that we do currently have. So there would be no additional burden to the taxpayers for that.
On that million dollar ARPA grant, that was, there was no matching funds contributed to that, correct? Or requested? That's straight $1 million-
Straight $1 million.
From, from ARPA?
And I believe it's sitting in, that's what I want to hear.
Okay, hopefully earning extra interest, okay. It's one positive thing.
And the, the short-term funds, while the county is paying the interest cost on that currently, it is also earning interest, and there will be a negative arbitrage on that that the county will pay, so there's really no cost-
Talking about the 2.5?
2.5. So there, real, in theory, there's no real cost to that 2.5 because of arbitrage. It's a tax, tax exempt bond, you're not allowed to earn, but so much interest on it, and we, because we have not utilized those funds, we are earning more interest than we were entitled to, so the IRS says you should pay that back.
All right, so our, our payment on that is 99, what is it, 99.5? Is that correct? So the interest on that, where is that coming to, Stacy? Is that coming to us, or is it going to the service authority?
It's in, it's in the, the fund is invested in the SNAP, or being held by SNAP, and I don't remember what that acronym means, other than the-
Okay.
There you go. So, so basically, it's sitting there earning interest that will help cover those, will cover those costs.
I have a real issue with this project.
I understood that.
With, with no commitment. And, and the last thing I'm going to say is, I was hoping Mr. Morecambe would be here to, to maybe give us a little bit more comfort toward this.
My, my understanding from Mr., Mr. Morecambe's team is that when they final, finally get their, this is where all the buildings are going because of the topography issues they've had, the challenges they've had, they are coming to the board of supervisors with that revised plan.
And, and I understand that, but if, if, I'm going to speak freely, if, if I was a developer, I think I would have understood the topography of that piece of property at the time I bought it, right? So with that being said, my main thing is, to my fellow board members is, is that moving forward, the only way I would be comfortable moving forward with this is if we have a written MOU with the developer. Because right now, we have no guarantee, we have no processes, we have nothing that is saying or forcing anybody else in this area to connect to this project, right? We know it's a, as you stated, it's a ticking time bomb on what they're sitting on, but we can't force them to do anything, right? So basically, we're going to be expending this money with, just to basically increase the value of that piece of property if nothing else transpires.
Well, my, all of this is pre-TIM.
I, I understand, and it's pre-Chris too.
And pre-Chris, I understand that. But this, my understanding, and this was actually from reading in the Nelson County Times and all that, this was a development-driven project, a project that the county board supervisors felt would increase development in this area that has no services. And that's my understanding of it. When I came in, Mr. Morecambe was hot, hot to go, everyone wanted the project done in six months, which was unreasonable anyways. And I asked him to give me some time to figure out what's going on. We, me and my team, we looked at the project, we looked at the original design layout of it, and the original, and a real budget on it, and it was far, 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 far more than the three and a half million. And so we worked to redesign it, to bring it into something that was close, close enough to the budget that we've been able to, to move forward comfortably.
My other concern, well, I, I have just a whole array of concerns, but we don't have time for all that this afternoon. But the other thing is, is I think this opens up, this, this develops a precedent for the county, right? Because I'm sure we have other developable areas in the county that may not have the infrastructure. What, what keeps us from doing this moving forward, right? I think we have to have a, a consistent and steady plan when we're faced with these challenges moving forward. So the last thing I need to ask about Mr. Costello is, is looking at those, those bids.
Correct.
That's a heck of a difference, right? What was it?
It's happened-
$545,000?
$500,000 difference, that's correct.
Does that, does that not raise a concern?
If I had, if I had not had experience with a low bidder-
Uh huh.
And had very good references with those who've had experiences with-
Okay.
-low bidder, I would have concerns. But I have had good experience, I've seen their work, I know other communities that utilize this construction firm primarily for all of their utility work, and they do a very, very good job, so I have no-
I'm definitely not trying to talk it up by any means.
I understand that.
When you have that much of a variant, that's, that's pretty significant, right?
And the, and the second bidder is currently doing work in the area and is, is looking to continue his crews over on his side.
Understood.
One way or another.
That's all right now, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Mr. Pugh, do you have any questions?
I think Mr. Martin basically hit all of the topics I was going to ask about. Basically, the understanding of what project three, how that would be utilized if the gateway would not come to fruition, and we have an understanding of what that is. So I have my questions answered.
Thank you. I had a, got a few. First is just a statement. I mean, we all know that we have got to invest in infrastructure down there if we're ever going to be able to market that area, so that's a given. How many households are we talking about in play that could hook up to this?
To the, to the entire project or to?
To the gra, if you need a gravity grinder, whatever, those people.
Project three?
Project three. Looking-
Any minute.
Not, not very many are along that, that route, there's only a few.
Like less than 10?
Looking at probably 10 to, 10 to 15 is, is a guess.
All right, this is for the county attorney, because the statement was made, we can't force them to hook up, and I don't know that we would, but could we if we chose to?
No, there, there's really no way to force an individual to sign on if they, if they have a perfectly functioning-
All right, and will any of this work here, I mean, obviously CVTC is, they're still trying to market that, will any of this have any impact on that?
No.
Okay. Board members, any other questions? So this is, what, what do you need from us?
This is an information.
Okay.
Try to keep, keep, make sure that, all the information is flowing in the direction it needs to go.
We appreciate that.
You know, you know, my anticipation, when we set, set our schedule up, is that our board would have met this afternoon, but we have to, had to reschedule our meeting.
Might encourage your board members to make sure they come to their meetings.
I have-
I'll have comment for that later, Madam Chair.
I, I just have one, you know, we need to have a contingency in plan for that million dollars for the ARPA funds.
Right.
Because it very well could be the fact that that million dollars is going to go elsewhere or could go elsewhere, and we need to do that fairly quickly. So we, we need to be able to utilize those funds, otherwise we lose them if this doesn't go forward.
And Madam Chair, I, I think Mr. Pugh makes, this is, this, this is the, this is the meat and potatoes right here, because I'm going to put you on the spot.
Okay.
If, under our current infrastructure that we have in place, as Mr. Martin stated, I think you can probably find a place for this three and a half million dollars pretty easily to be able to upgrade, update, repair, any, et cetera, in some of our current infrastructure, correct?
On our, on our sewer infrastructure, there's some pump station work that needs to be done, not, not to the tune of that amount of money by any stretch in our infrastructure master plan. We have the capacity within our sewer collection system and in our receiving treatment plant ownership to treat current, meet current needs and needs into the future. That was one of the, one of the goals that we worked hard with our infrastructure master plan that was completed. Where there is needs are areas where there are older subdivisions, which in the future will need sanitary sewer service or septic tanks replaced where there may not be the ability to do so. We're working with the county grant administrator in the Lakeview subdivision, there's some areas there that's part of the South Madison Heights CDBG grant programs that we, hopefully we'll be able to get some good grant funding for that, either through a construction grant or a forced account grant, which was a evolution of the former self-help grant program, where the grant programs will pay for materials and necessary equipment, specialized equipment, and at that time, the community actually provided the labor for the installation. They've gone to, that program has pretty much died out because finding volunteers to put in water and sewer mains throughout the Commonwealth has been, been difficult. So moreover, communities are going to the forced account where the community's paying for the labor and the grant programs are paying for the materials and equipment. And that's, I'm hoping to be able to do some, some more of that. There's a lot of opportunities for that within our community.
Thanks, sir.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, there's so much I want to say, but I guess my last question is, so where do you go from here with, with project three?
I'm going to bring this to our board of directors, and I would like to see project three be awarded so that we can continue meeting the, the commitments that have been made of the art, of the sub-grant agreement that the authority and the county have, have worked, worked on. And should, I, I have to believe that Mr. Morecambe is doing his thing. Now, why, why he didn't, why he didn't beforehand, I can't, can't speak to that.
Yeah, well, I wasn't going to go there, but I'm going to go there. Okay, so when this project first came to us, several, however many years ago it was, all right? And Ms. Tucker is absolutely right, I believe we should be investing in infrastructure, I believe we should do that to facilitate and encourage development, yet what I said then, and what I continue to have been saying is, there has to be a return on the investment, right? And he showed us tax numbers, I remember all that, this and that, and it was going to generate this many sewer customers and water customers, and that's how it's going to pay it back. Everything's great, all right? Well, guess what? That was then, and this is now, and nothing has transpired on that project, all right? Not the first shovel of dirt has been overturned, okay? But yet, everyone still wants the county to move forward and spend this, these dollars that all of the citizens are, are going to be responsible for, all right? Not, so they want the county to invest the money regardless of whether or not they come forward and invest theirs, okay? And we invest it, and it just sits there in the ground, it increases the value of their property long-term, and okay, that's great, but to me, there's probably other, we just completed a entire facilities master, or, you know, infrastructure master plan. Where I sit right today, unless somebody comes very quickly and says, this is our project schedule, and this is, you know, that under, that memorandum of understanding that Mr. Adams referenced, all right? That says this is going to happen by this date or, right? I wouldn't support you spending the $350,000 to do section three. I see no reason to do it. We haven't talked to the 10 or 15 people that, that live on that road, whether or not they have any interest in connecting to it. So we're going to put a $350,000 PVC pipe in the ground is what we're going to do, all right? And it's not going to benefit any- And it's not gonna benefit anything. So I'd encourage you not to spend any money. I'd encourage you start looking at other places to spend it on. That's, that's me.
I understand.
Sorry, Madam Chair.
All right, now that you've thought about it, any other questions? All right, thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Mr. Costello, thank you very much. You're a wealth of information. All right, moving forward, we will go to special revenue fund for Route 29 beautification. Finance Director, Ms. Wilks.
Big ride.
A big ride, excuse me.
He forgets.
Just needs a gentle little help every now and then, right? Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. I have placed on your agenda a request to create a special revenue fund. Back around 2018, we began the beautification committee for the Route 29. Every year, we give them fifteen thousand dollars to see what they can do. That's kind of how it started, and it's kind of built up so that they have some, some reserves that they can use on some larger projects, but everything falls into one line. So if we could, my request is to set this aside in a special fund, every year we'll just do a transfer of that annual contribution to them of the fifteen thousand dollars. We'll also be able to see better where they're spending their money, and they'll also be able to receive donations into that fund. I don't have, I need, if they get donations, I have to have a revenue fund to put them in, that they're stipulated for them. You know, they have those restrictions. I just want to do it at the beginning of July, make it easy to start then, and it'll help the committee be able to see better what they're doing and how they, and I know that I couldn't do justice to tell you all the projects they've done in the last five years, but I've seen a lot of things. I actually like to drive by the Arms Place all the time and see that painting. But I think they're doing a great job, so I want to try to help them grow a little bit.
Thank you. I know that we all, all of us certainly do support transparency in our budgeting and our finance. Board members, any questions?
Yeah, just, just a question, I had spoke with a planning commission board member, I believe that this was to come out of the planning commission, and it's funded by the planning commission, and just wondering whether it would be appropriate, I know that you said you wanted this done, and you wanted it done quickly so you could start at the beginning of July, but I didn't know if it should be something, we should talk with the planning commission to let them give a, a motion, or let them have their say on what they think of this, and whether this is something they want to do?
I don't know. This is, from an accounting perspective, I just know that that was what I was looking at.
And I completely understand. Mr. Bryant?
Yep, please.
And I think that's a great point, I think it's always helpful to include all the committees that have a part of this. I think this, this probably is more just how to roll the funds over, accumulate them, account for them better, and then we had had people in the past ask if they could donate, this helps with, with that. I doubt people are gonna be knocking the doors down to donate lots of money to this, however, it sets that ability up. So I don't think it hurts the committee at all in any capacity, I think it just kind of makes it clear from an accounting standpoint of how this money's working.
All right, I appreciate it. Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up to see, you know, I'd been asked whether or not to bring this before the planning commission, but as Stacy had said, it does seem it's advantageous in some aspects for accounting and so forth. I mean, the funding still comes from the planning commission.
Comes from us.
I mean, it comes from us, but it's, it comes out of the planning commission.
It comes out of the planning department's budget.
Yeah, out of their budget.
It comes out of Mr. Creasy's budget, doesn't come out of the planning commission budget. It, it comes out of his budget, and it, it simply will become a transfer to the revenue fund moving forward.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, so just for clarification, we're not asking for any additional new funds, right?
No, sir.
All right, I just, we'll be on record for that, for the people listening. And then, secondly, this would be, how, how will you determine annually, because these will, this funds will be coming from carryover, correct? Or carry forward? Is that correct?
So we'll balance up at the end of, when we close June.
Right.
We'll use that as their beginning balance to transfer out of the general fund over into the, into the special revenue fund. Every year, for next year and the years after, that fifteen thousand dollars that's budgeted every year will now be budgeted as a transfer to that special revenue fund, and I'll just move the money over there once a year.
So we're just talking about fifteen thousand?
That's what we've always done for them.
Okay, all right, so fifteen thousand are to carry forward, or Tyler's budget, go into this?
Well, the carry forward is more than that.
Well, I understand that, but we're only, we're only asking, you're only talking about fifteen thousand, or of that carry forward sum?
No, we're gonna carry forward about eighty-one thousand.
I understand it, but we're only talking about pulling fifteen thousand from the eighty-one to go into that special line item.
No.
No, we all live in the same place.
All live in the same place.
So currently, it's in the planning budget for fifteen thousand dollars every year.
So you're gonna put the whole eighty-one thousand into the?
Every year, we've requested a carry forward to bring forward whatever was in leftover. We've now built to eighty-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
So at the end of June, we'll ask for a carryover of eighty-one thousand dollars to transfer to the revenue fund. In addition, there's, there's still fifteen thousand sitting in the 2026 budget
Okay.
That we will also transfer to them.
Understood.
And then going forward, it'll just read as one of your transfers to, to approve each year.
I got you.
So, so as a question, you know, eighty-one thousand, that might not seem like a lot, but this year, I mean, to me it is, but this year we had a tight budget, and eighty-one thousand dollars could have been utilized to help with the budget. I mean, we still have that ability to use these funds if they, if we need to?
They've never been set aside, except for them. I can't speak to their current projects, I can ask Mr. Creasy to come up and let you all know what they have going on. I understand there's some larger things, larger grants starting to happen, but I don't know all the details.
So, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Were you done, Mr. Pew?
Yeah, my only concern is if this thing builds up to a certain point where you have two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred fifty thousand dollars sitting in a fund for beautification committee, and the money could be better utilized, spent somewhere else. I mean, that would be my, my concern.
Well, okay, so the way I'm looking at this is, we've been funding it, and I say we, the board's been funding this to the tune of about fifteen thousand a year for, I'm guessing, four or five years.
I believe it started in fiscal year eighteen, but I would have to double check.
So, quite a while, and they've, they've done some great projects out there, improved the appearance of the 29 corridor. Didn't they win some awards?
Yep.
Yep, won some awards for it. We've got this committee that gets together and vets the projects. The eighty-one thousand dollars that, that's sitting there, whatever it is, have we already carried that forward? I mean, we've had to have carried a portion of it.
We carried about fifty of it last year, I just haven't done, since I knew I was gonna do this, I was just gonna do it one time.
So, we already said that fifty, right? So, yeah, I, I get what you're saying, Mr. Pew, and I, and I understand, but you know what, I think it's money well invested in that corridor, I, I think if we want to encourage people to locate here, we need to improve the appearance of our committee, and what a great place to, our, our community, what a great place to start. So, I'd move that the board create the special revenue fund, name beautification fund from the leftover funds in the beautification committee line item, and transfer the budgeted current year funding to the special revenue transfer line item.
All right, motion on floor, Mr. Martin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Martin, thank you, Ms. McBride.
Good job.
All right, now Sheriff, can you talk to us about the school violence prevention program grant, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board. This is a situation that we should not even be here talking about, but unfortunately in society today, it's things that happen all around us and around the world with school violence and school shootings and whatnot. There's been some financial programs under the school violence prevention grant that offers monies to localities to assist and aid in trying to beef up the schools or do violence prevention activities or equipment, whatever, in the schools. And something over the last couple of years that's, that's been a question is the ability for safe storage of weapons in the school. My chief deputy was at a conference here a month or two ago, and there was a company that designed safes, and they're very small, they don't have a door, the door actually rotates inside when it's opened. That would be conducive in the SRO offices in the school to secure weapons that hopefully would never, ever be needed, but it would prevent the access from those that should not access them, but would create a, a safe and quick access in the event that these weapons were needed. We're looking at one in all the schools that have SROs, and it would be ten, ten gun vaults in the school, one of them would be a little larger for the high school. It is my goal to have this second officer there, hopefully, in the very near future with the added square footage there and the number of students that are under one roof. It's quite a bit for one officer to, to manage that in the event there would be a problem or just every day covering the halls and additional square footage there, so that is my goal. But these vaults, for, for ten of them, total cost is thirty-three one seventy-five, it requires a twenty-five percent match, that's about eighty-three hundred dollars, that if we awarded the grant, we would pay that out of fine revenue, so I'm not standing for you today asking for any additional revenues, just, one, if you have any questions, and two, if you would authorize that expenditure out of, expenditure out of fine revenue in the event we were to be awarded that.
Thank you, Sheriff, this is a, it sounds like a novel approach to me, but is this being done elsewhere in the Commonwealth?
To my knowledge, yes, there are the localities that have created safe and secure areas in the event, for them to keep weapons in the event they were to be, needed to be accessed.
Board members, any questions for the sheriff or for the superintendent?
I do, so obviously the superintendent's on board with this, so how unfortunate.
I agree with you, Mr. Martin.
So how, how do you guarantee unauthorized access to these things?
The way these systems are set up, they are not biometric, so they're not electronic where you stick them, they are actually, you have to punch the code that is for that SRO to have those, that would be the only individual that would have the ability to access that. It would not be given to school personnel, it would not be given to anyone. The grant actually does not provide for biometric access to anything, because, you know, I, for whatever reason, they just, they wanted to have combination key access to, to get into these devices.
I mean, I have full faith and confidence in you and your staff, the only thing really, my only thought is, is how do you absolutely guarantee no unauthorized access to weapons stored in a school, all right? And I'm sure you'll figure that out on your own, but.
Yep. The offices and areas would be locked, and obviously these devices would be secured at, at all times.
What if the SRO's not at the school and something happens?
The codes would be changed.
I mean, like, what happens right then? How do they get to the guns?
Oh, you, I thought you said when they exit the school, I'm sorry, Ms. Tucker.
No, like, suppose they just went out to lunch somewhere?
Mm-hmm.
How can somebody else get to the guns?
Nobody else.
There would not be, there would not be a person there that would, that should be, be able to access them. It would be only accessible to the school resource officers of that.
We have to be, we have to buy extra guns, more guns?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any further questions?
And any SRO, Sheriff, would be, no matter where they're assigned to, would be able to gain access to any school vault, correct? If you were to transfer, or you had something going on at the schools, the SROs would have the ability to entertain schools and access. Is, are the locks controlled, I mean, are they on a server, were they controlled remotely? No. Okay. So it has to be done physically? It has to be done mechanically, it's mechanically, has to be done there. Okay. Any other questions?
What?
I said, any other questions anyone may have.
Or motion?
So, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the sheriff's office request to apply for the school violence prevention grant and allow the twenty-five percent max to be paid from the sheriff's office portion of the fine revenue.
Motion for by Mr. Adams, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, next we have a carryover fiscal year twenty-five, Department of Social Services, Director Matter.
Fair board. All right, good afternoon. Amherst DSS, we're gonna estimate to have about three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of unspent funds at the end of this month. What my request is, is you allow us to carry over about fifty thousand dollars of that. The bulk of that, or half, is gonna be to fund a state-supported one-point-five percent one-time bonus that was in the governor's budget under House Bill sixteen hundred. That was for all local social service board employees, locally elected constitutional officers, general registrars, and members of local electoral boards, and full-time employees of locally elected constitutional offices. The state deposited approximately twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars of that into our funds already. They used a formula that I did not see to calculate how much they were gonna give us, but they only gave us about half of it. The caveat to this is, if we do not appropriate this for the budget, we have to return it back to the state. The localities that are returning the funds, they're going to pull together and they're gonna redistribute the funds, again, using a formula that I'm not aware of. They could give us more money, they could give us zero extra dollars out of that. So basically, what I'm asking for is for you guys to let us carry over about sixteen percent of our total leftover funds. Like I said, have to fund the one-time bonus. Also, we want to save some money for anticipated employee leave payouts that we may have coming up throughout the year. We have some senior employees with a lot of leave time that we think may leave, or may not, but I think they are. We have retirements coming up and everything too, so we want to be a little fiscally conservative with that. And then we have a couple of projects that we would like to fund that we have not completed as of today, instead of asking for capital improvement plan funding and supplemental budget requests later on. So that's what we're asking for.
Board members, questions?
So, Mr. Matter, are, are all of your employees funded by the state, or only a portion of them?
Everybody besides the part-time fraud investigator is gonna get the bonus.
But all of your employees?
Yes.
And they put in twenty-four thousand dollars already to cover that?
Yes.
So that, okay, so the other twenty-six thousand is for other types of projects and leave payout?
No, if you calculate everybody's salary on July first of this year, and then do the one-point-five percent bonus, that's gonna equal to about forty-eight, forty-nine thousand dollars total, and they only give us half of it, for whatever reason, to fund this bonus. So we're asking you to help us fund the rest of it. The letter I'm looking at right here says July first, two thousand and twenty-five, right? But even so, if you use the, you know, the June thirtieth salary, it's not gonna be that big of a difference, but, yes, they only gave us half of it. And if we don't spend it, we don't use the bonus money for that, we just have to give it back to the state.
I'm sorry, I, so the state says, state-funded employees are gonna get a one-point-five percent bonus, but they only give you half of the money to pay for it?
Yes, sir.
So, so are they saying they're giving you a three percent, and then you gotta come up with a percent and a half?
No.
Three percent is the cost of living, this is a separate one-time bonus that they put in the budget.
It's even worse than I thought.
Right.
So, Madam Chair, Mr. Matter, so going back to what you were stating a moment ago, the fifty is to be used for the, solely for the, and I may be getting confused again, fifty is used, being used for the bonuses, but you were talking about using some additional funds for some CIP stuff that you had, is that out of the three thirty-three total?
No, it's out of the fifty.
Or is it out of the fifty?
Okay, so we're Okay, so we're going to have about $333,000 left over.
Right.
I'm asking for $50,000 of that to carry over. $25,000 of that approximately is going to be used to cover the rest of the bonus.
Okay.
25 is going to be used for employee leave payouts and other projects and stuff like that.
Okay.
And that's all I'm asking for, so.
But you mentioned something a moment ago about some funds for some CIP projects that you, instead of coming back and asking for a supplemental request.
Right. These would be the projects that we have going on, that we'd like to use that other half of the 50,000, instead of requesting it for the supplemental budget process and stuff like that.
Any other questions?
No questions. I think, Mr. Matter, I think you've come with a very reasonable approach to doing this. I think countywide, we're going to have to look at and decide on how to deal with this issue across the board, right? And I think that's going to be on first meeting in June. I know this is for first meeting. You're rubbing off on me. Second meeting in June, all right? So, and I'm not sure what we're going to do, all right? So, to me, it's kind of like we're putting the cart before the horse.
I agree.
Because we haven't figured out what we're going to do for the rest. I mean, we've got the sheriff's office, we've got other constitutionals, so.
So the other part of this is, we have to submit a certification letter saying if we're going to give the bonus or not, and then, once we say yes or no.
By when?
What's the date? October.
Oh.
So.
You could wait till the second meeting in June.
We could, yeah. So the thing is, we just need to know if we have the carryover money at some point this month, and then after that, we can decide if we're going to give the bonus or not, but that's the intent to it. And another caveat to this is, there has to be an ordinance in place that allows us to give bonuses, and I'm sure not, well, I'm not quite sure we have one yet. So that's coming at the next meeting, too, is to have one in place so we can actually do this.
Wait a minute, I just saw another wrinkle. So we've got until, you said, October, November, to let them know if we're going to give the bonus?
That's what they're saying, but they.
But, and yet, if you don't.
But if we don't have the carryover money, we're not going to have the money to do it anyway, is what I'm saying. Like, we could, we could wait till October to say, yes, we're going to do it, but if you guys didn't approve the carryover money, we're not going to have the money to fund the bonus.
Well, we've got up to June 30th to approve the carryover. Or actually, after that.
Yeah. So Jason, the 333, where, is that from your internal review, or is that from, is that working with Ms. Wilks? Where did that number come from? I mean, see. See, this is all your fault, Stacy. I am truly sorry. This is, this is Ms. Tucker's fault.
It's coming from our county finance reports, RDA reports, and then it's just a projection of what we usually spend throughout the rest of the year.
Based just on your trends, okay.
Right.
I think you and I need to talk, so I think you left out.
Okay. Well, what I'm looking at here is, we're going to have that much left over to give you guys. We're just asking for a portion of it, whether that's the whole $50,000 or a part of that to carry over.
I'm with Mr. Martin. I commend you with being proactive and coming forth with this plan. I just feel like we're in a precarious situation holistically, as far as our employees go. And I don't, not that your employees don't deserve it, so I don't want that to be taken that way. I just feel like we need to make sure that we're doing our due diligence as a whole to see if we can figure this thing out or not.
Go ahead.
Mr. Adams, I was just going to point out, as has been mentioned, we do, we as staff are working to bring you something at the second meeting in June.
Right, right.
So.
The other thing I would like to say is that, and I don't mean to sound ungrateful, but I don't, I would like to see, and we can only speak for Amherst County, I'd like to see Amherst County send a letter to the legislature, to the governor's office, saying thank you, but you don't understand the unintended consequences of doing it this late.
Absolutely.
Well, and the way you do it.
Yeah, and the way it was structured. That's exactly right.
I mean, here's a 1.5% bonus, but oh, by the way, we're only paying half of that. And then, oh, by the way, sorry that you've got other positions that aren't state-funded.
And Ms. Wilks can speak to this in more detail than me and probably Robin, but the funds are going into our.
Ms. McBride.
I'm sorry, McBride.
What, she got a divorce?
It's contagious.
So these are going into the fund, or budget line, that has a 15.5% local match. So if they put all of it in there, you guys would only be locally matching about $7,500 of it.
Yeah, our issue is that we don't want to keep rolling this ball downhill. The, you know, the guys above us have done a piecemeal approach to this, and we have to do a holistic approach for all of our employees.
I understand. I get that, but I needed to ask.
And as a department head, you've been extremely conservative and fiscally responsible, and we, you have no idea how much we appreciate it, because you're able to solve your problem, but not everybody is.
And we also approved in our budget a 3% across the board pay raise, right? And they're just saying, oh, here's a 1.5% bonus. They got 3% too? Yeah, okay.
And this is a one-time bonus, not a.
Yeah, but it doesn't make any sense to require us to pay a 1.5% bonus that they're taking credit for, and when actually, half of it. And I think I remember that happening before with the school system. It was a 3% pay increase, but we had to come up with the other one and a half percent.
I agree. And like I said, they give us this, this carrot, where if we say we're going to give it and we need more money, we can request it, and they may or may not provide the rest of it later on, but we don't know until after the fact, so. They could, they could very well come back and give us another $25,000 of it from the people that aren't giving the bonus, but we don't know that.
But Board members, the question before us is whether or not we want to appropriate this money. From what I'm hearing from you all, you would rather think about it for a while and see what we can do countywide. Is that right?
My opinion is not think about it for a while. I think we table it until at least our second meeting in June, when Mr. Bryant and Ms. McBride come back with.
That we can look at it.
Yeah, so where we can look at the big picture.
Agree, agree.
I mean, I'm not trying to kick your can down the road, but I just think we need to be.
Address it all at once.
Yeah, I think we need to address the whole thing at one time.
I agree.
So for now, we're going to table this, this motion.
Okay, that's fine.
Do we need an emotion, Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we table this until the second meeting in June, once we have an opportunity to review the information from Mr. Bryant and Ms. McBride on how we're going to handle the bonuses countywide.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you, Director. I had a hope we don't have anything else with Ms. Wilks. County administrators report. Tyler.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Add somebody new to your family?
Yes, ma'am, we did. Madam Chair, Board, good to see you all. I'm here to introduce our new Assistant Zoning Administrator/Planner/ Erosion and Sediment Control Administrator/any other hat the county deems necessary. So we are, if you're not aware, our Planning and Zoning Division, we're a staff of three. So Mr. Ambergy is going to be wearing a lot of hats, not only for you all as a board and the commission, but our citizens as well. He's an Amherst County native, so we're very proud of that. And with that said, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Tyler Ambergy. We hired a Tyler that was important to me, so all codes go to the new Tyler. And so with that, Mr. Ambergy.
Thank you, Mr. Creasy. Nice to see you all aboard. I've met a few of you, not all of you, so want to make a formal introduction. Tyler Ambergy, as you mentioned, the new Assistant Zoning Administrator, and as many people are calling me Tyler Number Two. Tyler always talks about how he did that intentionally to make sure that I get all the requests going to him, but I'm excited. As you mentioned, born and raised in Amherst County, deeply invested in this community, and looking forward to making a positive impact going forward. So moving forward from now, if you have any questions or need to reach out to me, don't hesitate to reach out to me. I'd be happy to help out in any way that I can, and I'm excited to be serving the citizens of Amherst County.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you, Tyler.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Tyler Creasy, I've got some Halloween suggestions. Thing one, thing two. Does that ring a bell?
All right, county attorney, do you have anything? We've got the Board of Equalization member recommendations.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, that you're going to need to be thinking about who you want to recommend to be appointed for the Board of Equalization, which is appointed by the Circuit Court, but you can make recommendations to the Circuit Court. So we just wanted to put this in front of you to get you start thinking about who you might want to suggest to be appointed to that board.
I had a question. My computer just went blank. How many people will be on the board, or is that up for discussion?
Under Section 58.13374, it says that the, every Board of Equalization shall be composed of not less than three members, nor more than five members, or the number of local election districts in the locality whichever is greater. So for purposes of Amherst, you're talking about five.
Okay.
And an alternate. Have to keep that in mind, too.
Board members?
Do we advertise for that? Because I mean, it's been a while since we did this, that I can remember. We don't advertise for this?
No.
Okay.
So. So we're going to come back to you in the future, asking you for names, but we wanted you to start thinking about people that, that may represent the county on this Board of Equalization.
Right, and in, in your board report, it does make reference to the types of people that you are looking to appoint, because there, there are some specific requirements about what their professional backgrounds are.
So does it have to be one from each district, or could one district have two and somebody have three or whatever?
I think that's up to your discretion.
Okay.
I think historically, it probably has been one from each district, or no? Do you have three?
Don't think it was last time.
Three.
Oh, three, okay.
Me personally, I would, I would prefer to see one from each voting district.
Yeah. I mean, I certainly would recommend that as well. It's kind of like a fairness factor sort of thing.
Martin, you got any questions?
I, I understand the rationale for wanting one from each district, and that's fine. I just, what's important to me is that we put the right people on it.
Yeah, I remember last time, we had problems finding them from all districts. Okay. All right, well, that's going to be our homework. Liaisonary Committee reports. Planning Commission, Ms. Jones.
Board, I just wanted to give a quick introduction to Ms. Beverly Jones, and want to give a shout out to our Planning Commission and our Planning and Zoning staff. I believe you all, as a board, should be extremely proud of them. They're a very insightful group. They do their homework, and they always come very prepared, and that's something you don't get a lot of the times on boards and local governments. With that, we have Ms. Beverly Jones here. She is Madam Chair of our commission, as well as the chairman for our Route 29 Business Beautification Committee. The annual report for 2024 can be found within your board packet, and Ms. Jones is here to go over some of the major highlights.
Thank you, Tyler, one. Well, since Tyler introduced me, y'all know who I am, so I'll get right to it. Some of our highlights for the 2024 year. The commission had two youth representatives this year, Emerson Bryan and Bella Cunningham. They were excellent. I got them involved in, how you say, the future, what we were doing now, and they spoke up, and we enjoyed having them, and we're hoping to recognize them when their schedule gets a little smaller this year. We recommended four ordinance changes to the board of supervisors and one comprehensive plan changing regarding utility scale solar projects. We provided 16 special exceptions and seven rezoning recommendations to the board of supervisors. We reviewed and approved two major subdivisions that created a total of 23 new lots. Call that growth. We also reviewed 690 zoning permits and subdivisions in 2024, and we, let me get that right, which is an increase of 70 total permits from 2023. Growth again. And of the 690 permits, 111 were new single-family dwellings. Growth again. The Route 29 Business Beautification Committee, an advisory committee to the commission, provided three A-plus improvement awards to local business. First Choice Motors went in Monellison Chapel and Anderson Market. We also installed the Madison Heights Community sign. Isn't it gorgeous? Did y'all notice the little Nutcrackers? Okay, little Thanksgiving, okay? We got a flag up now, you know? We're looking good. And provided support for the removal of that vacant motel. This week, we're going to be heading out to the Monican Indian Headquarters, as well as the Johnson Medical Center, to award them two A-plus awards. Do y'all know what these A-plus awards are? Ms. Adams, you don't have a question? The A-plus awards is when we give matched grants with businesses to, how you say, improve their outside appearance. And as you go up Route 29 now, you can see, it is getting to be gorgeous. And we're getting a new restaurant, too. I love it. Any questions? Well, y'all good.
Ms. Jones, it is always a pleasure to see you and hear what y'all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, but thank you all for your support, number one, because that's what got us started. It was my vision, but that's what got us started, because we need a little bit of change, you know, to carry out some of these, and we're rolling and look for some new stuff coming in 2025, 26. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, citizen comment. Anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close citizen comment and move on to matters from members of the board. Mr. Adams.
Two things, Madam Chair. First will be pretty quick. Jeremy, my memory is leaving me sometimes, but then you and I, I want to make sure that it's brought up, and this is kind of on the heels of the fine work that Ms. Jones and his, her crew is doing. The billboard situation you and I talked about, just for the rest of you guys to know, I asked Mr. Bryant to look into this last week. Some of the billboards coming in for billboard advertisements is coming into the county is starting to look not so nice. So I asked him to look into that to see if it's anything we can do with the vendor to help improve that situation as far as the aesthetics on the 29 corridor. Do you have any feedback from that yet, Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir. Mr. Young has been assigned that. He's working on that and is going to come back with a recommendation to me, and then I'll come back to you.
Perfect. Lastly, Ms. Tucker and fellow board members, I thank you guys from, from when Mr. Costello was here. This has been a concern of mine since I came back on the board, was the current composition of the service authority. I certainly appreciate and I welcome the citizens' activity on the service authority. However, with that being said, I, I am also a strong advocate for the service authority getting back to somewhat of its original format. If we want to include citizens to that board, then I'm all for that. However, it makes it very difficult for, for me, I'm speaking for me personally, when we're discussing things as important as we did today, we're getting fragmented information to be able to move forward on, right? It's not that it's not inaccurate, but as far as how it's structured compared to how we did it before, I'm just not a fan of it. I asked Mr. Bryant to provide me some feedback on how or who is responsible for the structure. This responsibility falls on the board supervisors. I'm not, I'm not asking for us to take any action today, but I am asking for us as a collective board to think about this. I know we have three of, three of our board members on there now. Ms. Tucker, really, this would impact you and I more than anything as far as being able to have to be present for this. But I, again, I will reiterate, I would really like for us to. But I, again, I will reiterate, I, I would really like for us to, to get back to where the five board members on the, on the Service Authority. That, that's it.
Do I recall, and, and the other thing I would just like to say is we know that Mr. Wade will be leaving us end of the year, and we will have a new person in that seat. So, obviously, we'd like to include their perspective as well.
Sure.
Mr. Popovich, do I remember something about the, there was a problem between having all the board members also being on the Service Authority? Do I recall that correctly?
That, I think it was an issue before my time here, but I certainly would, would say that in my years in local government service, this locality's current makeup of the authority is, is unique in terms of all the other localities that I, I have represented. In that that authority technically is supposed to be an independent board.
Right.
And so, by mixing in members of the Board of Supervisors into the authority, you're kind of watering down that board's independence, as it were. So, you know, that's, that's kind of a moral question, too, that we all need to ask ourselves. Is, is it appropriate, or should that board be truly independent? An independent body that then communicates directly with the Board of Supervisors in an official capacity? But that I leave to y'all's discretion.
Yeah, I think you'd have to look at the charter, you know? The charter would dictate, because it has always been five members of the board for going back in perpetuity. And then the other, and Mr. Adams, I, I agree with you. I remember when the change got pushed through and, and we fought to have at least a couple of board members on that Service Authority board, because ultimately, as we see today, the buck stops here with the Board of Supervisors and the funding, because ultimately, we're the backing of that organization.
Well, yes, because we agreed to do so. That organization can issue their own debt, and that's the reason that it should remain a, a separate. One reason to allow it to remain separate. I mean, to me, Mr. Adams, and I've said this in the past, if we're going to make it all board members again, then we should look at just bringing the Service Authority in as a county department and be done with it, if we want to control it. Otherwise, you know, at, at one point, when I first got on the Board of Supervisors, there was talk of making it all citizen representatives. And, and quite honestly, I think the, the two citizen representatives that we have on there bring some very good input into the discussions.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I, I'm not taking anything away from that whatsoever.
But, and, and I'll just say, because I sit on both of them, but I don't think we can say, you know, if, if this board makes a decision, we made the decision, not the Service Authority. So, this board, and I know you won at the time, this board agreed to back that gateway product, right? They asked. We could have sitting up. Absolutely.
Mr. Adams?
No, no further.
Mr. Pugh?
I have nothing.
Martin?
Yes, ma'am. I received a telephone call from a citizen on Todd Lane, which is not in my district. I believe she is in Mr. Drew's district. And I forwarded this on to our county administrator and Mr. Wade, but did I say Pugh?
You said Mr. Drew.
Mr. Drew.
Just pointing it out.
We're struggling today.
It's been that kind of day. Anyway, she is interested in traffic calming on, in her neighborhood. I believe the county administrator has reached out to the sheriff's department about possibly putting some of those speed signs and possibly further patrols, and also has been looking at VDOT, talking with VDOT about traffic calming and how that would work, so. Might be more of that on the future.
Yeah, Mr., I had reached out to Sheriff Ayers, and his staff's going to do more patrolling in that area, put up a speed trailer. I, I did call the resident that complained to you. She was satisfied with that. We're not planning to approach the traffic calming direction yet, because it could involve more county funds or HOA funds, if they were.
Understood.
But she was satisfied with that response.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, I've got one thing, and Ms. Jones, I'm glad you're still here, because it has to do with the Beautification Committee. I had a member of the Planning Commission approach me, because apparently, there's some interest in extending the geographic boundary of the Beautification Committee to bring it up to the town limits, I believe. Regardless of where it stops, that would be outside of the current charter. So, we would either need to amend that charter, if the Planning Commission so desires, or have a sep- sep- a, a separate entity that would do that second part. Anyway, board members, just food for thought, and was wondering if we could ask staff to look into this for us? I mean, why not? I think the whole 29 corridor ought to be as pretty as what Bev Jones and her group have done in Madison Heights. Mr. Tyler, do you want, I mean, Mr. Creasy, did you want to say something?
Yes, just so that you are aware, staff will be bringing the proposed charter change to the commission for approval. It does go all the way up to around Sweetbrier's property, technically by what VDOT calls Route 29 Business. That is actually the stopping point for Route 29 Business. So, we don't believe we would need to rename our charter or rename our committee or anything. However, if we wanted to go north of that, to the Nelson County line, I do believe that would involve a few other changes. And if that's something the board wishes, we can always look into that.
Thank you. Any feedback on that? Okay.
No, I think it's great. Have there been, have there been suggestions offered on what they would like to see done in the other section?
Well, I heard one person say to Sweetbrier, and then somebody else said, why can't we take it all the way to Nelson County?
Okay.
Just to speak on a few things. So, for example, the crepe myrtles along and within the median on Route 29, that's currently out of our geographic area. If it's brought into it, those funds that you all spoke about earlier can be used to hiring professionals to go out there and maintain it. Faulknerville, as you know, is a, I wouldn't say it needs a facelift, but someone might say it might need a facelift, and that allows to expand there to improve those businesses, as well as adding in signage as well, such as the Madison Heights Community sign. You have other communities along there when you get route towards Route 151 and some other things. So, there are definitely projects that the committee could look into. Now, we might ask for more funding if you expand this, so just keep that in mind.
Well, my only, my only caution on that would be, if you expand the area and not provide any more funding, you're going to water down what you're able to accomplish, right? So, you might be trying to do too much. So, that's something to think about if we go that route.
Mass big. Ms. Jones and I were the two that set that committee up in 2018, and that was one of the reasons we drew a boundary, was because we wanted to be able to get our feet under us. We wanted to understand that, that gateway between Amherst County, Lynchburg, that Madison Heights area. So, our focus was, let's do this and let's do this well. And we've been doing it now since 2018, so I, I mean, I support the committee doing, looking past it. I was just, all I was reiterating was the reason why we picked a boundary. We tried to do something that we thought we could make a real difference in.
It's a problem with, with success, Ms. Jones.
I love it.
All right, board members, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Motion on the floor, by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion, meeting's adjourned.